All right, we call this special meeting, select board meeting to order. Any suggestions to agenda?
I have none.
Public comments on items on agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Baron.
Thank you. I have three. First, uh, last week, uh, yeah, well, last week, I mentioned that I have a very construction debris being dumped, and I now would say that it has been used to construct a retaining wall. And, uh, that's a very, that's how, that's what promoters do. So, good for that. Now, down at Alice Holloway Drive in Carol Brown Way, the hole in the ground has been opened again. What's happening?
Um, I can state that the insertion valve is going in. EJ Prescott is gonna put that in. It was supposed to go in today. They're coming back tomorrow. And then the other valve on the end of the water line on Alice Holloway is going in tomorrow as well.
Does that mean there's no water shut off?
Um, the EJ Prescott insertion valve is gonna be a live tap. The second valve going in will require putting metals to have more water shut off, and they will be the only ones impacted.
There'll be, uh, uh, sorry, we are having some difficulty because of your taxes. I mean, as you said, putting metals are the only place that will be impacted.
That is correct.
I was following up on this because it costs the co-op some thirty thousand dollars. Firstly, because, uh, we paid the, I might say, because I'm a member owner, we paid the deli staff even though the deli could not be operated because he, uh, my health coach says you have to have running water, have a whole pool of running water. Uh, third and finally, uh, I was walking through Mount Pleasant Cemetery, it was Saturday or Sunday, and I encountered a couple there repairing gravestones. And they are the little souls who own the Basterdville. Uh, they mentioned that, uh, they were doing some stones near where his parents are buried, just out of the goodness of their hearts, and they've been trained by the Royal Cemetery Association. Luckily, that's, that's old Charlie Martin, who's been doing this for years. Now, uh, I have, I'm going to publicly ask a question to our town manager, uh, with, with the proviso that of course you'd want to answer this at the next select board meeting. And that is, please tell us by fiscal year, for the past ten fiscal years and regarding fiscal year to date, how much money the, 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 the government has spent during each fiscal year to repair gravestones?
I'll get an answer from our cemetery commissioners.
But, you know, I'm, I'm blind side of you, so of course it's not tonight. It's a, and even if you can't get it by next week, but it's fine. You, you'll get it when you can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. All right. Moving on, select board new business. Well, starting with the Highway Department?
Work. I did invite Lenny, but he made pop in. So this is all preliminary drafts, okay? We worked on the Highway Department, um, draft budget and the capital plan. These are gonna change, folks, as will the water in the sewer, so. But it's a start. So. Not sure. We need to go line by line. Um, what I can tell you is, um, I had Lenny Howard go through and put some numbers to his budget. And I did the same exercise, and then we left for two hours on Monday. We went over things. Um, the biggest change, I'm gonna let you know right now. And again, folks, when I say numbers, these are not gonna stick. They're gonna bounce around a little bit. Um, we did, uh, decrease the highway budget by one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents at this moment, okay? But we did that because we've been carrying a sixth employee full-time with a family medical benefits package and all the other benefits. So that is the savings right there by taking that sixth person out of his budget. Um, we were able to increase a couple line items that we thought, you know, they're close. They're not over budget yet, but, um, as you go down through this budget, when you're looking at it, you have fiscal, but at twenty-five, and then the actual. That is the year that we just closed out. The audit is not complete, but it has gone to the next step with the auditors. So we should be seeing something in a couple weeks. Then you have your budget for FY twenty-twenty-six, which is the year we're in right now, from July first, twenty-twenty-five through June twenty-twenty-six. And it also shows you the actuals, which we've only been through four months. So what we do when we look at fiscal year twenty-seven, which is like July first, you know, next year, we look at the numbers and we pretty much, if we know there's gonna be any, we'll increase that line item. But otherwise, you know, the budget, it's, it's an estimation. Um, most of the time, if we go over a line item, we can justify it. But, um, for several years now, we have had a fun balance in the Highway Department, which is, you know, been good. But again, you know, it's because we carried that sixth person for at least four years and never filled the position. The other thing too, I will note, and I have talked to Lenny Howard already, paving in the budget, if I can find the number for you folks. And I know this is, you might be lost when I'm just talking, so if you're confused, just stop me. But on page four, you'll see bridge maintenance and re-treatment. And then the total re-treatment, you can see in fiscal year twenty-five, we didn't spend any money. And it was the same the year before. So that's why we're carrying like a surplus of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we do our best to get as close as we can. Um, the other, I, um, I'll throw it out there, is on page five. And it's like three-quarters of the way down. A hundred and seventy-five thousand, if you can spot that number. It's for the Highway Capital Reserve. I'm, I'm amazed at the cost of buying equipment right now. It has ha, it has like almost doubled. It is insane. You know, we're looking at for a cabin chassis, at least two hundred thousand dollars. Um, with a trade, with a trade, folks, of about fifty thousand. So just a cabin chassis is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The body, the dump body, fully equipped, is another like hundred and ten thousand. So we are looking at four hundred thousand dollars for a piece of equipment.
Do you remember how much you paid for the last one?
Not that much. Um, so two years ago, um, it would have been around, with the trade-in, we were only asked for like a hundred and seventy thousand. So. So that one hundred and seventy-five thousand is a transfer into the Ha, uh, Highway Capital Reserve, which, um, I don't wanna raise it any higher, but I, we cannot lower it at this point other until things settle down a little bit. The other thing too with the dump trucks, there's no, there's a no-competition clause between the dealers. And it's not like we can just go anywhere unless we go like trial.
Isn't that an antitrust violation? Wasn't Sherman Clayton speak to that?
I don't think it's fair, but it's, it's, the dump bodies are the same way. We have two dealers that, we go to.
But are they colluding on a price? Is that what you're saying? Or they, they owe you their one, and they'll say the same thing as the other one does?
They're pretty close, so we also.
That's competition.
Yeah.
They're pretty close.
They're very close. They're within like ten thousand dollars. So we don't still think they're going to lie. Just to say that way, but, but.
Certainly, that is always a good point.
The other thing too with the equipment, um, so we ordered the truck that we're supposed to have in this fiscal year. That truck is not, the cabin chassis you're in at ATG in Westminster, the dump body is, that truck will not be done until late summer, early fall next year. So it'll be next fiscal year. It will, but it's coming out of the, uh, Capital Reserve, so that's not gonna mess up our, our fiscal year numbers for the money.
Which is precisely the thing, was it, or should be?
Yes. Yeah, we. And for this reason right here, because we have no control over it.
Yeah.
So this is like the first year that we're like seeing going like, oh my, oh my God, you know?
I know that your material don't have capital replacement plan for the fire department. Um, I read some articles recently about what's going on in the place in the Adac Court, but it's just run afoul.
Yeah, so the fire department, we're gonna talk about that while we talk about the general fund. And I do have a capital plan from the department. And I do have their draft budget, because I met with the chief yesterday. So I do have that stuff, but in our next meeting, we'll do general fund in all the town offices in the fire department. So, um, and just know, these are all gonna change, but, um, I'm just a little nervous about needing to purchase another truck. So that one's gonna be two years out.
Yeah.
We need to three.
Where are we with the? Well, the loans are being, the loans are paid off, FY twenty-seven? Um, I just wanted you to look it up. Equipment principal payments, page five?
Um, what's on page five?
Yeah, there's a trust payment and a need for this payment?
Yeah, so this year is the last loan payment on a dump truck.
Oh, this year?
Yes. So all of the loans for the highway equipment are gonna be paid. The only thing we'll have is the escrow bidder lease, and that goes to like fiscal year twenty-eight.
So would it be possible to take the money that we're paying for loans and put it into the capital reserve? To increase it?
Well, we can do that because we've reduced it by a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So, um, I will tell you between the capital reserve for the Highway Department and the fund balance, the Highway Department's sitting on one point one ninety-eight, should have had.
Oh, nice.
So, um, the one thing we don't wanna do, and this is something we need to consider, the board can consider, um, we don't wanna see the budget fluctuate every year. We wanna try to keep it, you know, um, will we need a, ever need a sixth person on the Highway Department? Maybe not. I mean, we have three people right now that are nearing retirement. Um, since a matter of time. And the conversation, who we have, the Highway Superintendent is, you, you have to build your team. And you're gonna prepare that you're gonna have to replace three people within five years, or less.
So are you saying that in reference to the sixth employee of adding in order, as part of that transition?
Um, I'm not recommending that at this time. Um, I think we're a small enough town where we really don't need to carry six highway.
Okay, I just didn't know why you were referencing that right then, whether it was in relationship to?
Yeah.
Um, no. The transition needing to have a sixth person.
No. But.
Hopefully, they won't retire at the same time.
Right, I know, I know. What is that, the silver tsunami? I'm dreaming of it. So. That's enough to involve sort of the Highway Department right now. Um, I'll do a little more evaluation and, um,
How we said that the benefits aren't going up at a higher rate?
The benefits?
Yeah.
Because we took that one person out?
And that's how?
Yeah, yeah, yes, so we eliminated.
Okay.
The benefits for that one employee.
If you said that, I missed that.
No, I, no, that's a good question, Peggy.
Well, without taking that difference out of consideration, um, how fast are the benefits going up? To our increase, percentage increase in our health insurance, for instance?
Um, well, we're gonna stay with the same medical provider, MVP. Um, I don't know what the increase was, it's not that, it's not as bad as I thought. Blue Cross went up a lot more, so, um, the other thing too is I look at the cost of living. And I need to revisit last year. Apparently, it was seven point six, but last year, yeah. And, you know, so, um, that all is taken into consideration as well. So even, I'll look at it later, but I don't have a percentage on the medical. But it's not, it's, it's not like, oh my God. I think it's reasonable.
I will say I've done business with both Blue Cross Blue Shield and MVP. Uh, I'll take Blue Cross Blue Shield any day of the week.
We, so when I first started, the town had Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah.
And then the difference in the price was quite a bit. And when we switched over the first year, it was, you know, a hard transition for one or two people. But I haven't heard any complaints.
Right.
So everybody seems to be satisfied. But, yeah, I'll have all that with the general fund. I wanted to present it tonight. It's on the agenda, but I, I just ran out of time.
And what are we doing in terms of pay increases for staff?
That I wait till the very last minute, because I look at the cost of living and, um, it's, I'm gonna have Kim do a spreadsheet for us too. I'll see through the last, like, five years anyway, you know, what the increases were compared to what the cost of living adjustment should have been. But again, last year was seven point six, and employees saw a two-and-a-half percent increase. So you gotta balance that out to a little bit.
That'd be great to have a good summary of that.
Right now, I'm planning on two-and-a-half percent, but that most likely will change and increase.
And your two-and-a-half percent is just, is based on?
Salary.
But based on? Why two-and-a-half percent?
Um, it's been customary. Um, I think since I've been here, the largest cost of living adjustment has been like three-and-a-half or three percent. So I don't ever recall it being any, much higher than that. But it was very low when I first started, and then after COVID, it kind of like skyrocketed.
It was a soap-like, yeah, yeah, right after that.
Yeah, so I wanna have a comparison, so we can all look at it, and then we can decide what's better. And behind the Highway Fund budget is the capital plan.
Yes, very. What is the order for a public question?
Uh, you want to go again or are we?
Um, no, we can.
Go ahead, Mr. Baron.
Thank you. Actually, uh, uh, two questions, uh, at a point of information. The cost of living, that's the, uh, cost of living index produced by the, by the US Department of Labor. The latest figure as of, uh, before September is two point six. And of course, they're, they're still going, they're like, shut down at the moment, so who knows?
Right.
Uh, okay, um, regarding the, uh, the, uh, the chassis and the dump bodies, uh, our town manager mentioned two dealers. Well, certainly in New England and upstate New York, there's way more than two dealers. Have we considered casting a wider net to ask dealers, are they way too big and perhaps to submit sealed bids?
Not, not yet, Mr. Baron, um.
Would say so, right?
It could, but, you know, traveling to get it, yeah. I mean, it's worth looking at and asking a couple other dealers as they, you know, turnaround time, you know, those are all questions that need to be asked. The other thing too, when we take into consideration, um, buying a new vehicle, is the trade-in for the one that we're getting rid of. Another conversation Lenny and I had is we need to be looking at auctions and not just trying to trade it.
Yeah, a little more money that way.
Yep. Yeah. And you can keep it longer, because, you know, if we can't get this dump truck until fall next year, we gotta continue to run the truck that they already gave us a trade-in value on, which you know may not stick. So, um, we're, we're looking at a lot of different things because of what's happening with su, supply and demand. Because we're not the only town that buys from Westminster. But we will start looking at other alternatives.
Consider their towns are auctioning too.
Well, it's hard to buy somebody else's.
Yeah.
Um, we're experiencing right now, we, so we had three trucks in the garage this week. One ton, and Willie's truck went back in. That's the one that's, we're waiting for his truck to come. And then Pat's truck, um, which is gonna be traded the following year. Um, and they all have some suspension issues. Just, they, they weren't built to be doing what they're doing on our dirt roads, so. When you look at a single axle, and then you're gonna pay another, you know, fifty thousand for a ten-wheeler, then you gotta be like figuring this out and saying, okay, that's a better truck. Well, we're gonna pay more, but maybe it lasts two extra years. Instead of having it for ten, we have it for twelve. Yeah, this is, this is all stuff that we're like, have to consider now. So. And I, I will give Lenny credit. When he came in, he was prepared to sit down and go over these numbers and, um, his capital plan. And he was talking to other road foremen in different towns and, you know? We decided to put tires on like four different vehicles and he got word from another road foreman that, you know, if you buy through them, they, you get the government discount. So it's like, he's saving money, he's learning, you know, and he's communicating and talking with other towns, which is great. But, um, so this capital plan, of course, it will, it can change and shift a little bit.
So I have a question, and it's just my own educational process. Is how is it that things, and some things end up on this capital plan and other things don't? Like the excavator, I understand, is because we're leasing it.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be on the capital plan and the sidewalk machine?
Yeah, we're gonna get a price for a replacement. And in two years, the excavator, whether we decide to keep it or not. So that's why these are on here. And we have added new items that were never on here. So like a salt shed.
Uh-huh.
Town garage.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's maybe not feasible, but you're gonna have to do a study, you know? And it's like, you, you buy a bigger truck, you need a bigger garage. You buy electric, you need a totally, you know, right?
So they're, they're on there for future consideration?
That's right.
Right, just to?
Yeah. It's a flag?
Yeah.
You know, not that we're gonna move on them, and so let's just say you put the salt shed in there, right? And we say we want it in fiscal year twenty-eight. So you, you get a price, right? You don't get a grant for it, right? So then push it out another year, you know? So you kind of prioritize, um, your capital plan, especially with your equipment. Um, if you look, um, so in FY twenty-seven, which is the budget we're working on right now, um, you see, so the one-ton ram needs to be replaced. So we, we got a full replacement for that, so a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The one we're replacing was sixty thousand. And then, you know, we need another dump truck, so, you know, I, I put two hundred and twenty-five thousand in there because I used to have a hundred and seventy-five in there. Now they're more expensive. So it's, it's an adjustment, but it's, it's a map into the future. And technically, we should be planning ten years out. And showing five is fine, but we should be planning ten years out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's the Highway Department. All right. I want, I have sewer and water in here as well. Deterrent water is a user base operating budget. And I will make the board know that operating faster, increasing, we have an aging system, and rates need to go up. We are not covering our operating expenses at this point. I was at Government Day in Montpelier on Friday, and I learned, did not even know this, but I learned, there's an agency, Drink and Water at State of Vermont, and they can help towns, you fill out a form, they will help you do your ordinance and your policies, and they will work with you to do. Do your ordinance and your policies and they will work with you to do rate changes. So I am gonna. Take advantage of that. I'm, I asked a lot of questions, I learned quite a bit. And I'm like. I'm not on your mailing list. Why not? I didn't even know this department existed. And she's like, well, normally it's your op, your water operator is. Signed up, they can be announced. Alright, well, that's gonna change because. I have been struggling. We need to do updates. And we need our rates changed. And I know Chris Hayes from Simon Services Operations has been in front of the board a couple times. Simon's Operation Services, SOS. But we definitely need to do a rate increase. I don't know what it's gonna look like. Uh, I've been told that we should be raising rates every year. They have not been done since I've been here.
That does not seem unreasonable to raise rates.
Right.
Reasonable rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So sewer budget. Yeah, sewer, yeah. So the sewer budget. As you can see in the first line, user fees. So it went up. Eight thousand four hundred ninety one dollars. Three hundred and ninety four thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars to cover operating expenses seems high to me for. A system of about a hundred users.
Wait, wait, can you say that again?
So on page, on page one.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the sewer department.
Yeah.
So the very first line item. Where it says user fees.
Yeah.
So for fiscal year twenty twenty seven.
Right.
It will cost three hundred and ninety four thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars.
What do you think? I don't see that number.
Are you on?
Under budget. Twenty twenty seven.
Are you here?
Got it. Thank you.
Um, and these reports are generated out of Network. So I plug in the numbers. And this is the format. I know you're used to seeing it a different way.
It's okay, we just have to.
Yeah.
Take it one bite at a time.
Yes.
Okay, so it's. Increasing by eight thousand four hundred and ninety one dollars, but then what were you saying about?
Hundred dozens.
The operage, operating expenses were seen too high for one hundred.
Yeah, so the total operating budget, folks, is three hundred ninety six thousand nine hundred twenty eight dollars, I guess.
Wait, nine hundred and twenty, so the total, that's the total revenue, that's the.
Their costs are going on this week.
Yeah.
But where's that?
So. Your revenue and your expense have to match.
I see.
Yeah.
I really think these.
You, there's a question that has always bothered me, which is depreciation.
That is a tough one and I. That bothers me quite a bit. And. There's an explanation here. Um, that. Chip Sterns had explained to me. And so. Depreciation does not get, um. It's a journal entry at the end of the year. Cause it's an asset, it depreciates.
That's what bothers me. It's, it's almost the, the, the other side of the capital reserve. If you're not, not depreciation figures theoretically, the amount. By which your capital assets have been worn out in the past year. So that it's, it only comes in and this, uh, it's been buggered me for years on. All sorts of budgets.
Yeah.
That money ought to go into the reserve fund. It shouldn't just be a bookkeeping item. It shouldn't just be a ledger item.
Right, because it's a liability, you're paying on a bond.
You're losing, your, your capital assets are losing value. When they lose enough value, you're gonna have to replace them.
Yeah.
You ought to be putting that money in a capital reserve issue and nobody I know does it.
Yeah, it's just weird and, um. So the water is the same way and these are the only two operating budgets that we do that with.
Right.
We don't do it with any other budget. So.
What are you gonna depreciate the town hall?
You know.
God knows who we should have.
Well, it'd be very low, um.
Well, there are some assets that you put money into maintaining every year and that theoretically helps them retain their value. But there's also stuff like, you know, the water and sewer, that equipment's gonna wear out. Just no matter what you do, it's gonna wear out.
If, if there's another way to do that, Fletcher, I would love to eliminate that out of the actual operating budget.
Or, or treat it like a true expense.
Mm hmm.
I mean, one way or the other, just as a just general entry, it makes no sense to you.
Right. Yeah, I am like gone back and forth and that's the explanation I had. I still don't.
It's like, and accountants like that number and they want it in there.
Yeah.
And the real world doesn't give a little bit of work.
The other thing too, this number is low. It's right every year in sleep.
Yeah.
It's off.
Yeah.
And, and that's what, you know, the bottom line is impacted by that.
It is, and yet the number came straight out of the lava land. Somebody just made it up.
Well, so our auditors do our depreciation at ten percent, one percent depreciation.
They do it more based on tax tables than on the real world. They use depreciation schedules that are derived from the tax tables and. Those depreciation schedules literally are fantasy layer. They don't reflect reality at all.
They don't because when we journal entry it and it's more than I'm like. Yeah.
Anyway, well.
But anyway, no, good comment. You know, fully noted and like, I agree with you. I don't know why it's in that. But maybe I can, um. Talk to, uh, the State of Vermont.
Yeah.
When you say you don't know why it's in there, what are you referring to? I thought it was more, I don't know why it isn't there.
No, so the page two.
It's how it's being treated, that's.
Yeah. But depreciation expense.
Okay.
It's always been in the operating budget. Okay, and then at the end of the year, the auditor gives us a depreciation number. That we journal entry. Into this and it should be legally higher. Than the thirty thousand.
Okay. Got it, yeah.
But thirty thousand bucks never goes anywhere.
Right.
It's in the budget as if, but it doesn't ever go.
Yeah.
You're depreciating the asset, you're not depreciating the operating costs.
But we're not paying ourselves that money.
Right.
To, it ought to, if, to make any sense to me, it ought to be, we're into a capital reserve, that's to doubt. Wearing out the equipment, but it never does and it's nobody ever.
Let me, let me ask the question.
Count your question.
Yeah, let me ask the question. You know, BLCT may know too. Um, although. A lot of things.
So just so I understand, is the question. Can we take the depreciation amount and put it in the capital reserve? So that by the time. We need it.
Right.
We've actually done.
Cause depreciation, you're depreciating the asset, you're taking the value away from the asset, but it shouldn't show up in the operating costs.
Right.
Because that doesn't make any sense. No, it's just.
It's just on paper.
It's just on paper.
But it doesn't. Okay.
Yeah. Cause it's not on the other side in revenue.
Right.
That's the other thing.
Or in the calendar.
Right.
But it's in your, but it's in your operating account.
Right, but I mean, if you were adding the asset as part of the revenue, then that would make sense.
Yeah, so if you took that thirty thousand out of this operating budget, it would reduce what you needed to raise.
But see, that's the part I don't understand. We go to the taxpayers, we raise the money from them. But nobody ever writes a check that reflects that money. It just sort of gets absorbed into the, into the budget, like cash pool.
Yeah.
But it never actually gets paid out. Then why are the taxpayers paying anything?
Well, it's the users that are paying it, not the taxpayer.
Well, yes, I guess.
Property owners. So it's users. Just a user fee base.
They pay it in.
Um, right. Well, let's look into it a little more, maybe we can change that.
It's all, every time I see it, I think.
Yeah, non bonders need to. I don't know. Sure, yeah, so the one thing I do need to look at, um, page one is Simon Operation Services. Um, I don't think I put the same amount as last year, so I know it's going up four percent. So.
Water is that there?
Water or sewer? We're in sewer.
How great down. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, Simon's Operation. So I'll make an adjustment there, but again, these are just. First draft.
Karen, I want to go back to the original thing that you were said. That you felt was the operating costs were too ex, too high for the small number of people that were. Actually. Um, being served. Can you speak to that some more?
Yeah, I mean, like four hundred thousand dollars to operate, um. The sewer department, wastewater treatment plant. Knowing that it's nineteen seventy seven when it was built. Um, I think there's ways to reduce this budget, like electricity. Sledge removal. That's a, a big expense to operate. Yeah, we have the bond until twenty thirty seven. Um, the other thing with the bond. So the principal is going up, the interest is reversed. Principal should go down, interest, you know.
It's in your, in your organization's script.
Yeah, I didn't do it, but it is inverted.
That's weird.
For both water and sewer. It's the weirdest thing.
I guess I'll do that.
Yeah, um. Electricity is another one, Peg, so. We're not getting the solar credits that we had because that expired. So we really should be considering a community, um, solar array. So, and. In hindsight. When we had grant money to do the energy audits. Probably should have done one on the wastewater treatment plant. So. Um. I think there's ways to reduce. We're just gonna, we're gonna have to.
Just need to go to off peak on sewer.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and the other thing too is, you know, if we have more infill housing, it's. You know, it's gonna drive the costs. So some things we can't control, but if we're aware of them, maybe we can put something in place. Cause when you have a hundred. Users on a system paying four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Worth forty thousand bucks a year for my tenant.
Well, it's a hundred and sixty four dollars and change every quarter for sewer. Right, and then black rate. So.
Doesn't sound like it even touches it really.
Right.
So theoretically more infill housing. Assuming the system could. Manage the numbers, the cost should go down.
Right, right, right.
There's probably a sweet spot there, right? This.
Yeah.
Beyond, beyond a certain point, we have to build a new system.
It will retire the system.
The other thing too is when we get into looking at the rates, so, um. You know. Having a meter, not having a meter, um. You know, two thirds of our users, one. One big parcel, um. So looking at. Rate levels and if somebody uses more. You know, then it bumps up to a different rate, you know, so those are all things that we need to explore. Smart water meters is gonna help the town. Especially in a drought situation, cause, um, if there's a leak. The resident can get an alarm. And they can look at it, you know, whether it's a toilet flap or whatever it is. Um, so just trying to modernize. Our systems. To save energy is. It's gonna be a big lift, but. We need to start looking at this.
Well, this, once we have like this, like years, do we have any control over? What happens on an individual site? Like if we notice that somebody's. Water consumption has gone through the roof, will it go off here?
Yes.
Will we be able to do something about it?
Yeah, all the meters are gonna read right into Kim's office.
But we can't flip the switch and turn it off the water until.
No, we're not that. Um, sophisticated, but at least we will have. You know, we can see it.
Out there, it's going up.
That is correct. So. Um.
Do you have much of that kind of trouble with the water system? I mean, we've had some recent experience on the aging infrastructure. But, um, do you see individual conception with numbers bump around?
So we have six. Test pilot meters out in the community right now.
Mm hmm.
And. Kim is watching. The numbers and there was one building, it was like. Something was running all night. She could see, she saw how much it increased. And then the next day, it went back down to normal. So.
And these toilets, you know?
Yeah, could have been a flap, could have been anything, you know, so. This is. The sophistication that we're not used to and I think it's gonna help. And there's smart hydrants too, Fletcher. So.
It will throttle back if there's excess consumption.
They won't throttle back, but if there's a leak in the water main, it will send an alarm because of the pressure.
Right.
And, you know, we can get right on it instead of, you know. Being lucky and somebody hears a water leak and says, oh my God, you know, we got a leak. And the water gets shut off. So.
I had a client in Rattleboro who got a tiff with her at Land Jordan. Next thing he knew, there was somebody from the public works department knocking on the door.
Yeah.
And then she opened every faucet and he was like, I'm all run for weekend. He just said, you ever get on top of this, we're shutting the water off to your building.
Yeah.
And it was a part of building, so just one tenant.
And what did you do? Never occurred to me.
I mean, my first gig weekly, I worked for Greater Boston Legal Services. She was an urban tenant. She was very busy. And that's where she was at.
All right, so. Water budget.
Yes, Miss Sarah.
I could also, our clarification about depreciation if you wish.
Right.
Or, on a balance sheet, you have assets and there's assets like land that, that don't wear out, but there's assets like a truck, for example, that does. So periodically you adjust its value downward and that is depreciation. And there will be a comp, and that's on the asset side, there will be a compensating entry on the, on, on the liability side of the balance sheet. Now beyond that, uh, if you pay taxes, we're, we're getting into a complex area here, so I'll simply say. Uh, if, uh, depreciation can be used to reduce your tax liability in certain circumstances, but this, of course, is not applied without.
but this, of course, is not applied without money. So basically, it's a matter of assets on a balance sheet, which obviously a truck is five years old and doesn't represent what we paid for.
And and I understand that on an asset balance sheet, I don't understand it in an operating budget. Because that that number just goes, oop, doesn't go anywhere. In a on a balance sheet, it goes from and the value of the asset, asset and the liability get adjusted in tandem. In an operating budget, there's a number there that goes poof. It died, it's nothing, nothing happens with that number. It's in the operating budget, but money never gets transferred.
Well, uh, that actually is true, sir, because as I mentioned, uh, my truck is wearing out. But let's say we paid two hundred for it new, and now it's ten years old and it's worth fifty.
Well, and we've been paying that depreciation fee of medical fees as on our operating budget. That that's why I say if you put the number in your operating budget, you want to put the money into the reserve fund because you're gonna replace that truck. And that's where that's where you find the money to do it, but that never happens.
The thing is, depreciation is not cash flow. So therefore, there actually is no money. It's simply saying the truck uh is is worth less and and if you're doing it uh in a business, the IRS allows allows various methods of calculating depreciation. Once you pick one, you stick with it.
That's what I'm saying, is that there's no, that's not a real world, even that's not a usual figure. It's a figure driven by the tax. Because they set those schedules.
But all it is, is i- is adjusting the value of an asset. Now, uh, if you like where the money went, well, well, in in the service of the truck provided. So or whatever, for some number of years.
Why is it in the operating?
Well, I I have a little more closely at the operating budget to to uh.
The account was wanted in there. I don't understand why, because no money gets transferred as a result of that, and the operating budget is about writing checks.
Well, you're right, uh, 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 depreciation is not cash flow. It's simply saying, fuck is worth less because we've been using it.
Right, that I totally understand. The asset gets, the value gets adjusted, and I totally understand that. And that the value went into the use of the the asset, but or went out of the use of the asset. But why it's in the operating budget just mystifies me.
You're raising an interesting question, because this is a municipal budget. In the case of 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 a business, what you need are doing there, if if you're tax-selling assets, as should businesses sometimes are. You know, you're 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 reducing your tax liability.
Sure, and I and I did that every year of my business. I've also been dealing with municipal entity budgets for thirty years, and I've never understood why these are in here.
All right, water department. So basically, you know, same, a little bit different, a lot less money. You know, just basic operating expenses, testing chemicals, Simon's operations. Um, we have a three-year contract with them, and it will increase each year four percent. You know, electricity, that seems to be going up. Again, your bond payment, your principal is going up and your interest is going down. So the increase overall right now is ten thousand three hundred ninety dollars. Um, with both of these budgets, I try to keep the expenses as low as I can possibly. It's a, it's a guess. You know, I'll call different contractors and see if they're spending any increase. Try to get as close as we can.
So, um, you, when you were talking about user fees going up for both of these. It sounded like you were saying it as though, well, we, you know. I I guess my question is, what else could one do other than increase user fees? I mean, you have, you have to, you have to, it has to.
The only other way that they can come down is if you add more users to the system. So, and I know, we all know through our housing needs assessment study that, you know, we have approximately eighty units that we can put online. And then we're gonna be looking at something totally different. So, but that's the other way that fees can come down is if you have more users, right?
And the other thing is that, um, a few years ago, the town voted to put the bond payments entirely on the users, uh, as opposed to being on property tax base. Which I personally disagree with. I think it's a community asset. And that the entire town should be paying for the bond, especially since the entire town voted for the bond, and the people who were impacted by the water system didn't get that vote. So, um, I don't know if we can reverse that trend, but that would be another way to bring the user fees down.
Right, because there was forty thousand dollars. That was in the operating budget for the general fund, and it transferred.
When did that happen?
It was two thousand seventeen, it was, it's around there.
It was two thousand seventeen. Yeah, no, Chip was, Chip Sterns was in Trump, and he took it out. He took it to the voters and they named uh.
Water and sewer.
But it's something we can look at. And I know there is a a bond balance for both. So some ones sizable. But some of that money is restricted. I'm gonna look into that a little bit further, but um.
And how did we end up with the fund balance? Is there?
Um, I can't answer that question. Yeah, over time, it has just built up. Um, I haven't seen much money spent, spent out of there. I mean, it just keeps building, but um you know, at this point, two peg, there's not much of a surplus. So it's building slower today than it was in the past.
I think if you, I think the bond, bond from the whole town in order to be saleable, the only way to break that out would be to form a fire district for just those hundred users. And then they, the fire district was for the bond. But we've never done that.
Yeah, it's just, it was just unfortunate that the the town decided that it was not worth to the rest of them to continue to pay for it. Because it's, everyone benefits from the downtown being a water and sewer.
Well, I sure do.
But I mean, people who aren't on the system will come down here and use the systems that we have here. And the businesses that are on the system, they all benefit from that. Just my two cents.
Well, how other towns do it? Do you know?
Um, I know a lot of towns have the entire town paid bond, and then the users should pay the user fee later. I think it varies, but um I'm not sure any towns have voted one way and then said, well, actually, we're not gonna do that now.
I don't think that's a thing you can reverse once you've done it. And as I said, perspective, we couldn't, actually, my first political office was up to I was appointed to the Prudential Committee for the Westminster West Fire District. And we managed a torpedo, but that would have been the way to do it.
All right, so moving on to the capital thing. Again, the water, you know, you have your water bond and you have your sewer bond. So your sewer bond will be paid off in two thousand thirty-seven, and the water bond in two thousand forty-two. Um, what we should add to this capital plan is um extensions for water and sewer. So spurs, right?
Wow, you're gonna make users pay that?
Well, no, but if we want, you know, more infill. You know, like Old Depot. Not Old Depot, excuse me, but Old Route By. You know, have a spur up there, River Road. We talked about it a little bit for the town item. Um, but this is something that should be on someone's radar for the future, and we should be planning for it.
Hopefully, on the planning commission's radar, because if you had to put out a spur because of the development, and somebody called to explod it, you know, that should land on the developer.
That too, it's um.
That's been discussed, I think, is the impact fees.
Impact fees, which we should be looking at that too. There's a lot of different things we really need to study and decide. Um, we have to create revenue. Those things are just gonna continue to go up.
Well, we have to address the needs of the community, so the community needs more housing. That's something we should be planning for. I mean, our responsibility is to find a way to do it that's as effective. This can lead to a big. From the community, definitely use more.
So, um, we don't have reserve funds for water and sewer yet. There's separate funds.
Oh, there, we do have them.
But they're, those are not in the um
Well, we've got these other funds, so it's just funds.
Yeah, in your audit. Yes, you get sewers, you get the waters, and those are are operating right there, four oh two and four oh eight. Yeah, those are operating. But in your audit, there is a section that does have uh, numbers. Or fund balance, they have unrestricted funds, they had restricted funds.
I was wondering if we should create reserve funds for um sewer and water um capital improvements that would not be in the sewer and water. Operating budget, it would be a town, it would be part of the property tax base. And then put, you know, ten thousand dollars here or something, whatever, so that we can create spurs.
Let me look, I don't have um a balance sheet for either one of those today. Um, but I will get one and take a look at that. And then ask some more questions and bring it back to you, if I should have anything. All right. Is there anything else? I know you're gonna, you'll have to just take a little time.
In terms of water and sewer, are you asking or agenda? Are we gonna talk about this fund with?
We are. We are.
Yes, I wasn't sure whether.
It was requested to be on the agenda.
That's further down though, isn't it?
Yeah, so I made that happen. And I should have made adjustments earlier, Eric, sorry, I was just. So employee benefits, uh, I'm gonna present those when we do the general fund. Um, and I will have each one, so you can see the cost and have a comparison. You know, for like the last five years, so you can see the price changes. So that one I'm gonna save until our next special meeting. I wanna remind the select board that the town report, select board report is due. I don't know who's writing it.
Traditionally, the chair writes it.
So, in your town report. So. Eric, it looks like this here.
You can copy and paste whatever I wrote last year and do like an AI thing on it.
I don't, listen, mine's not do, I mean, mine's not done yet either, and I have to do a zoning one also, so. I think I can keep that a hot water for another week. But, um, so basically, what we do is I go back through minutes and you see what, you know, got accomplished. Um, the other thing too is your um, that list that everybody was working on different things, so I have a list of completed items. Um, that might help to, you know. A personal, you know. Just read this one, Eric, and then you'll. But AI is very helpful. So there's that. All right, so the next item is a reserve fund, so. Fletcher, you asked for this to be on?
I did, and I have to say, switching through what we've gone on here I'm impressed, I'm very much appreciative of what into that, I just say, it's us a lot, you know, certainly. Even, you know, I'm not that it's the end all or the deal, but life was in my comfort zone on this.
So I just wanna say that um I know you and I went back and forth, so I had somebody in the office volunteer. Um, they were going into the vault and looking at all, every single town report. And all of our town reports are on our website, by the way.
Ninety-three of them.
Yes, and they had a health crisis in their family, somebody passed, so it took away from completing this project, okay? Um, Kim is on top of a lot of things here, and I'm very impressed and thankful that she's in my office. Um, she's very detailed and she wants to understand the process, so. Um, she put a lot of effort into this as well. And before I went on vacation, because I know I gave you a packet on September seventeen, and then I was off on vacation. I didn't get a chance to look at what Kim compiled. And I did some more work this week. Um, to understand, I needed to understand too. I'm like, where is this? Where is that? So, I'm confident that we are doing the best we can, and we're getting better. Because I can say back in two thousand seventeen, it was a whole different world. Um, so do we make mistakes? Sure we do. Can they be fixed? Yes, they can.
And that's, that is exactly what I was after driving for, is we need to find out if there are holes and then we need to plumber. But that that was always my goal.
Yeah, now, I can say there are resources. Um, the LCT, if you want, and we'll straighten and ask a question, but um, a lot of our stuff, folks, is in the audit. But it'd be a little while to get adjusted on how to read it. And, you know, it's it's a good resource, so it explains what funds are. Whether it's reserve fund, whether it's a special fund, or, you know, immediately based. Um, the other thing that we created here in the town hall is this FY twenty-six settlement. So it, you know, it's a short version, more detailed version, like easier to read sometimes than obviously the audit and the town report. So between the three resources, most of your questions can be answered through here. So, and we put a lot of effort into this to make it easy for people to buy and stand.
I like that, Duncan.
Thank you. And I actually borrowed this from Weatherfield, just so you know.
Okay.
And we just plugged in, and every year we add something new. And, you know, Kim's like, should I put these graphs in the town report? I'm like, no. Like, no, we don't want graphs in the town report. You know, it's like, there's enough stuff in there. So. That is our process here. And to educate people. And I've always said, if you have questions, please come and see me. Um, and Fletcher, I just want to make sure we have different funds. Reserve funds are totally different than special funds and investment funds and this sheet that shows all the funds, lists all the funds. That is out of our internal accounting software, NEMRA, okay? That is for us to use, and that has changed quite a bit. And there is at least one or two that need to be reassigned. Like Forest for Learning says it's a reserve fund, it is not. Okay, that was a special fund. Money came in for the transfer of the school forest. That money sat with the town and then it went back out. So, there's no money in that account, and it's definitely not a reserve fund. So, that right there is a mistake that needs to be corrected. Um, it went to Forest for Learning when they.
And it's true to that corporation.
Yes, it was uh seed money for their, yeah, uh, organization, yeah. And there's a lot of grants in there, that's how we track our grants, through different funds. You know, some money in, expenses out, you know, so we can balance. And, um, if there's money left in like a grant fund, then I come to the select board and I say, like Landmark College, the third phase of the sidewalk. There was money in there because we expensed straight and I got reimbursement. And I had the select board, actually, it was, I think it was a, a um town meeting, we had an article and all of that money into, you know, two different accounts. But the select board actually could have done that on their own, but I like transparency, so the more they transfer the better we are.
Yes. Uh, two points about reserve, about our A reserve funds. First, just for public interest, the whole balance, our current balance of our A reserve fund is a million, two hundred twelve thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Which leads me to my question. For example, the sidewalk reserve fund, one hundred ten thousand dollars. Uh, one would expect if it were earning interest, that there would be a, a a, a figure having, having fewer zero than that. Hence my question, are these funds earning anything?
Um. I will explain that all of these funds reside in the general fund. In the main bank account, the NFT bank. They're not in separate, like, checking accounts. Um, they're not in investment accounts either, Eric. All that money is sitting in the general fund. Earning, um, interest.
For us, about, about point four percent, I don't know percentage to you at the moment.
Um, what, um. Um, I can tell you on our balance.
Uh, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mean to get you into the, the weeds here, Ms. Hummer. It was simply, I, I, I found out what I would like to know, and therefore my, my supplemental question is why are these reserve funds totaling one point two million dollars, uh, not in accounts earning more money? Simply to keep them up with the consumer price index. I'll give you an example, and, uh, money market funds now are typically paying between three and a half and four percent. And the consumer price index now is about two point six percent. With these funds sitting in, uh, in the bank like that, what we're doing is, we're not keeping up, our money is not keeping up with inflation. So I would suggest that, uh, you look carefully at putting this money, this being held in, in, in the long term, as, as one might do on one's personal finances, is what helps to earn at least the inflation rate, because otherwise you're falling behind every day.
Um, that's a good point. Um.
Don't we have a limit on how much we can uh, make an interest as a municipality?
I don't think so, because right now, um, for fiscal year twenty-four, we made ninety-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars in one year.
Made what?
Ninety-two thousand.
Well, ninety-two thousand represents, uh, we made what, you know, not, not the amount, like full up.
Went into, that's, it went into the, the general fund interest.
General fund interest?
Yes.
That is on, 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 um, okay. It is not something in a street, uh, uh, like a kind of like we got when we walk in off the street?
No, it's a business account.
Okay, so and they have more favorable barriers on it?
They do, yes.
Do you happen to know the rate they're paying?
Um, I can't tell you that, but I hope my dad.
Would be unusual if it were, if it were, it would have worked shy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so for fiscal year twenty-six, we made seventy-five thousand dollars in interest.
And you don't happen to know the balance, how much that's earned?
No.
Okay, well, that, that, uh, you know, you could, you could let me have that information, uh, what is convenient for you, I'm curious.
Yeah, I can have Kim pull that.
And, and my instinct is simply, are we, are we, uh, making that news to the inflation rate, because otherwise we're losing money.
Right. Um.
I'm actually have to go live work overnight.
Is there any other questions about reserve funds that I?
Well, I'll, we've through all this, I'm sure I'll come back, Kaden, soon.
You know, if you have a question, then there's something else, you know, there's a lot, Fletcher.
Yeah, I mean, the real question to me is, what, what funds are subject to that losing fund requirement? I mean, I, I, part of the problem we're having with this, the discussion, I realized that as soon as I you know, read the first two lines of this list, is, I mean, those, when, when you're you know, one hundred isn't a, a fund, it's an operating account.
Yes.
Runs into trouble with that already, so we need to separate the sheep from the goats. And that's. I, I had one good, very good conversation with the attorney at the League of Seasoned Towns, and maybe I'll get back to all those follow-up questions when we refine this.
Um, in your packet, there is a, an email um, from Susan Setting, and she talks about, um, special funds and the fund balances, so, um, yeah, and.
Aaron.
Yes, Mr. Ferrer.
Um, I ran across something that may be of, well, quite presently of interest to, uh, to any property. I was looking at the taxonomy and the statutes for, uh, the unassigned fund balance statute and the reserve fund statute. And as far as I respect, the unfun, the unassigned fund balance statute falls under chapter fifty-one, finances accounts and audits, subchapter two, town treasurer accounts, city accounts. But, reserve funds falls under chapter seventy-seven, construction and condemnation. And, uh, uh, I wonder why they put it there, simple as that.
There is some history of you, and why that, that particular, the reserve fund statute originated in construction. Because it was about highway construction originally, its use has extended beyond that. But it's, but it's placement in the statute says not.
Well, they have to work supplement, basically.
And so that is sort of an anacritism there, but.
I never noticed that before, but I was looking at my financial access today, and they have it set up, so that's all it is.
Yeah, things have changed over time with accounting here. Um, we did go back like nineteen seventy-seven on some of the town reports. In fact, then, they had like a highway fire department, like expenditure fund and, you know, a different type of reserve fund.
Yeah.
And, you know, I took it back as far as where there was like fifteen hundred dollars in the reserve fund. And like, all right, that's far enough for me. You know, but it's interesting to see how things have evolved. So. All right. Oh, strategic planning process, I put out on your tables. Um, I mean, you already have talked towards that.
Yeah.
It's the same class.
As, as I said from here.
Um. Although we have a list of items that you've all been rocking on, I think it's important, um, maybe in the ball. And maybe we wait till March, uh, his, um, elections. And the board really had some sort of vision and goal setting and put it in writing. And that way, when you, you at least have a plan. The other important thing too is to read through the town plan, the twenty twenty-three town plan. That may give you some ideas where, you know, the community should be going. But I think having a roadmap on paper will benefit us as a team. And it can shift and pivot a little bit, hey? There's a lot of uncertainty out there and, um, you know, working together is gonna be important. So I just wanted to give you those to look at, and there are other towns that have the same, some are bigger. Um, the town of West Dix has a nice one, but something to think about.
I love the narrative, we're after the their SWOT analysis, weaknesses, town size, geography. Oh, well, let's change that.
But if you go to different towns, and if you like, have a favorite town, you know, take a look at their website and see what they have on you. See what they're doing. Um, it's a good way to bring other ideas, you know, here. I mean, having Eileen in London here is like yeah, I'm sure we share the same concerns and issues beside a different law.
Yeah.
But I'm in a good area and always surprised that I'm still in Wimbledon County.
It's funny that it's in Wimbledon, but it is.
So there's that. And I'm gonna keep going, Eric.
Yeah, you go more.
Everybody's all set, you don't have any questions?
No, thank you, Ashley.
Okay. Um.
What's your, you mean, up, up through, uh, item four?
Yes. Um, so, financial policies, select board, old business. Um, in your packet is the fund balance policy. And I put the LCT's new rule in there. Um, I did request the response from legal counsel for the town funding, but I have not received one. But in your packet, we did, and I said we, Kim and I, did reach out to the LC to understand you know, special funds and funding balances and, um, with the new law that was just passed about fund balances. Um, and the fact that we had created a fund balance policy prior to an actual legal vote. Um, we weren't, we wanted to make sure that we're in a good place with this. So, basically, Susan Setting, she's an attorney at the LCT, gave us some guidance. Um, basically, she said, because we had a town vote, we should create that fund balance with the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand plus and put that money into that fund, okay? Um. The fact that we created and adopted the fund balance policy prior to the vote, um, probably needs a near vote. Um, and the other question too is whether or not the board would like to take the LCT's template and adopt that with the language that's in. So. I don't expect you to make a decision on this night, we can put this on the agenda for next week, so it's in a public session. And folks can read the policy. Or, the new law states that you can roll the fund balance, right? Year to year, so you're gonna have a fund balance in the general fund, and you're gonna have fund balance in the highway fund. So, as far as the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand that was voted on at town meeting, we definitely need to have a reserve fund for that, okay? Moving forward, you can roll it year to year. You can also take that money and allocate it to reserve funds. And it can be voter approval if you want, if you wanna be completely transparent. You can create an Eric role and you're not the voters, so, okay? Um. My recommendation for the highway surplus is to leave alone. Only because if we end up with a storm, we're gonna have to tap into that money. And I don't recommend moving any of that money into any other reserve funds. I think the highway, I believe the highway fund balance and their reserve means. in their reserve needs to be utilized for the highway department, for equipment, um, roads and bridges, storm emergencies. But the general fund, that's, I think that's a further discussion. And it can be year to year, when you look at a fund balance, see how much surplus you might have, then you decide. And the select board can, you have the authorization to spend reserve funds, you can vote on it as a board. You can, or you can take it to the floor or vote. But the select board does have the authority to spend reserve funds for the purpose it was intended for. Nothing else. I'll make that clear, but.
No pizza parties?
No. So.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ferrer.
I just have a question, is clarified, did I mention that our town manager to say that reserve funds will be on the agenda of the October twenty ninth, so it for me?
Um, the fund balance policy.
Oh, true, Erica?
Yeah. Unless Fletcher, do you wanna have a discussion about reserve funds in a regular select board meeting?
I'm open to that, I mean, I, as I say, I want to read through this stuff and maybe talk to the LCT council, but um, you know, I, I'm still a little uncertain what types of funds need to have a reserve funding, but I I just, I just, I will clear that up only.
Okay.
Know which are sheep and which are lambs.
Okay, well, just let me know.
So Karen, you're proposing that um we look at the that we consider adopting, or at least discuss of whether or not we want to adopt this VLCT.
Yes.
Uh, template.
Yeah.
So um, okay, so.
Chairman?
Clara, the one that we had done previously.
Yes, Mr. Ferrer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I will mention that I second what, uh, select person Proctor has said. And I hope that will be, uh, our reserve, the reserve funds will be, uh, on, I go on, on a on a regular reading as opposed to a work session. Uh, certainly because it is one point to two million dollars of our taxpayers' money. Also, for most of us, that's.
Thank you.
Social agency request for funding, I want to table that, folks. What's for me? So I forgot, there are two people petitioning. They may come straight to the select board. They're both Bradborough agencies. So. And new ones? No, so Groundworks, they were in Route C. Yeah, and um, the other one is Wyndham Place, I think that's the name of it. The weird thing is that I went through my emails and they had, they wanted to be on the list back in twenty twenty two.
Where are they?
I haven't read, I haven't read what they do, or, you know, but we're having them go through the same process as Groundworks, so you will see a questionnaire and a financial report. I want to take all the social agencies, and we have to do it early, because if they have to actually petition um voter signatures, then we want them to be prepared to do that.
Yeah.
So I think having a work session with social agencies in it, and then we'll bring it back into a public session is fine. Um, I can tell you there's a local social agency that is struggling and they were curious if we could change the way we appropriate monies. I'm gonna off the cuff, off the cuff, say no, that's what the petition process is for. I can come to town meeting and ask for more money.
Right.
But I don't, I mean, a lot of people are struggling, including taxpayers.
Right.
Another thing this board needs to consider is that whether or not you have all the social agencies, whether you write the article or they petition, but I, I really believe that they all should have an article at town meeting. Um, there is a risk with that, as you know, because somebody from the floor can say, no, I want to give them twenty five thousand dollars, and then everybody will vote for it. Almost like we had a hundred thousand dollars in March for the fire department. And he's like, whoa. Wait a minute.
And the problem is that the order of funding articles was, I know why it was done that way, but I disagree with doing it that way, because it eliminated that one.
Right, and I go back and forth, legal counsel reviews our town warning.
Well, yeah.
And I have done it both ways since I've been in.
You always are really honest too, it didn't get to that basic policy decision. It's much more unwieldy to have the final number, you know, wait until the end.
Right.
You have to do a lot of calculations on the fly.
Yeah.
But it just seems to me it's fair with, it gives the town meeting what the town meeting ought to have. It just, the right to control the homes.
Right.
So I have a question to talk about when we're talking about warrants.
Yeah.
Just saying, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, so I just want to plant that seed again, I don't, I don't know what the best policy is.
I think we got pushback last year, people went, went, because they didn't want it, they don't want to go through the list, they want, it's what the point, the point of the social whatever we call it now, community service appropriation policy, whatever. Um, that was the entire point, was that there wouldn't be ten articles on the warrant. And that there would be some consistency with funding.
Yeah.
What's your rationale? Well, we don't want to have this conversation now, but um.
Most towns will have social agency articles on the warning. They, it's just the way they do it. I mean, it doesn't matter either way to me, it, it will, it's up to the board. I want to, it's your town meeting. Well, it's not your town meeting, it's the voter's town meeting, but you're.
Our platform.
It's our warning.
We're just the target.
You are.
We create the warrant. Warning, whatever.
Yes, Mr. Ferrer.
Regarding the town meeting agenda, once again, I, I second what, uh, I second, uh, select person Proctor's comment. Although I'm not an attorney, I'm wondering whether, in fact, the ordering of items on a town meeting agenda is actually a legal question as opposed to merely a, a practical question. I'm simply asking that question rhetorically. Also, uh, and, and final point, um, our town manager mentioned that some social service agency had asked that we consider, uh, uh, appropriating money to social service agencies differently. My question therefore is, what did they ask for?
I, I think that would be better served in a future meeting when they're here.
Yeah.
You can't tell me, if, if they, if they asked for something specific, is it not possible to say what they asked for specifically?
No, they just would rather see the process done differently.
I'm sorry, I'm not really totally hearing it.
They would like to see the process of allocating, um, done differently. They didn't ask for a specific number, they just, uh, based on um operating budgets and being a local, community-based social agency. They appreciate what they do receive, but it's not enough. It's just not enough. So, you know, when you have a social agency that gives to other towns and, you know, it's costing them three hundred thousand dollars a year, and there's only so many grants that you can get and donations, and um, so it's, it's, it's a struggle financially, it's a challenge.
As it is for everyone.
Yes, yeah, so.
I'd like to see them tell us how many town residents they've served. And the same question that Mr. Ferrer asked the other night at the sendouts presentation. And got the same sort of fuzzy answer about economic development benefits us all. As opposed to with the, well, I can't remember the name of the entity, but that runs the mover bus.
Yeah.
And they had numbers, you know, absolutely nailed down, how much of their budget, how much of, how many riders they had, it was like, wow.
Yeah, I, I mean, we have, we receive a lot of annual reports from most of the people that, you know, we allocate money to or appropriate, appropriate money to. When I was in Westminster, and I don't know how London area does it, but Westminster, when, there's either two or three town agencies that are actually built right into the budget.
Yeah, London Dairy has a combination of both.
Yeah.
So there's some line items appropriations in the budget directly, and then there's, um, and then the rest of them have to petition.
Yeah, like Westminster cares, I know they're in the budget, last year they were like a line item of twenty five thousand dollars.
Petition for three years, after the petition for three years at the same funding level. They then become a part of the town budget at that level. If they want an increase, they gotta go out and petition again.
Right, right. So, you know, that's an option for looking at local. And then perhaps what happens is, depending on that number that comes out of Bubay, right? Because they would be Bubay, they run into the actual budget. Then that money over there could be split a different way, where other people would get more money, right? Other agencies, so.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, yes, yeah.
I, I think we should put it on a future, a future regular meeting agenda, have them come visit us. And, I mean, as far as this year is concerned, I, I, we, we've already spent a lot of time revisiting that policy, I don't think we should be making exceptions. Um, so I think we should follow the policy, the, the policy we have, and we can say, well, you know, revisit it next year.
Well, and they can petition.
They can petition, yeah.
Right.
After the petition.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah.
I mean, their petition could say, we want to be a line item from now on, right? I mean, that's a petition for anything. So I just don't think we should be making exceptions to a policy that we.
That's kind of late now, yeah, because we're already into budgets and um you're not going to want to be doing that, we have way too much work to do for the next few months between budgets and the zoning regulations that are still on target for G and Y. Yeah. So, that'll be fun, not in January, well. Yeah. So, um, that's all I have, folks.
Good, we need an executive session. Anybody?
I don't, don't have the need for it.
Next meeting, October twenty ninth, that'll be a regular meeting. Your local year?
Sold.
Second?
Call favor?
I will not be here next week. I don't need to go to London Dairy. I adopted the London Dairy town plan.
Well, at least you're doing some fun.
Yeah. Did you have a consultant?
No, it was a quick, quick and dirty, let's have been this thing, because we were in the middle of zoning bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
The, the planning commissions really knew, so it wasn't on their radar.
Right.
So they had to kind of drop everything and work on the town plan. We were in the midst of applying for funding, so that became an issue, because you have to run town plan.
Right.
So it was like, get this done.
Oh, yeah.
So they're they're gonna redo that.